Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Douglas School Committee meeting for Wednesday, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Happy Saint Patrick's Day. And I'll call the meeting to order right at seven and do a quick roll call vote of the school committee members. Roll call.
Becky Tarnia present. Ellie Grady present. Julie Mulder present.
Hannah Mooren present.
I'm present. We're gonna skip over the pledge allegiance and if Will comes, we'll interrupt a little bit. Um, if anyone has any public comment in communication, you can raise your hand and now is the time for that. You can also write in the chat. And I'll give it a minute or two and maybe Will will sign in.
Mr. Wagenheim has his hand up.
Go ahead, Mr. Wagenheim.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Wagenheim. Did you unmute here? So Mr. Riden and myself have spoken on many occasions on behalf of the DTA. And while we often feel our concerns are not truly valued or taken into consideration, my words tonight are not about the teachers. Um, I want to say a few words on behalf of an overwhelming majority of my students. Last week, every one of my classes was eager to talk about the return and I, I don't know what precipitated it, but they clearly needed someone to talk to. And I learned very, very quickly that a majority of my high school students are very anxious and very nervous about the return. After talking to other teachers about it, they were hearing the same thing. Sure, some kids are excited, some are ready to come back, but most of my students were not. They also shared their frustrations about full remote being the only other option if they're not comfortable with a full return. Most of them wanted to stay hybrid. I'm not going to repeat their specific concerns in public, you know, I want to respect them um and their privacy, but I can tell you this. My students were rational, honest, and genuinely concerned. These students are old enough to make rational decisions, but we haven't listened to them yet. We're constantly using the phrase safe supportive environment. Um, but I guess my question is, do we mean that? It's written in a lot of places. Um, but if thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, whatever it is, percent of the kids don't feel safe coming to school, should we be using that phrase still? As of last week, the number of towns in the red, which at one point was over two hundred, is now, I think it's fourteen. Um, Douglas is one of those fourteen, and yet rather than follow the state's guidance, we're choosing to be aggressive. And my students do want to know why. We are returning earlier than the state guidelines at the elementary and middle school, and the state didn't even give guidance on the high school. Um, because they want to see how the data comes out of those other two groups first, but we're ignoring that. Experts are warning of another surge, other countries are shutting down, but we're choosing to be aggressive and the students want to know why. Other health departments across the country are urging high schools to stay remote and not go back full time because they are worried about this new variant. The students saw the classrooms set up, ready for a full return, and their anxiety is spiking because of it. The kids deserve an explanation and they are waiting for one. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wagenheim. Would any of the school committee members like to comment on that? Okay, anyone else for public comment or communication?
Lisa, just if I may.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was slow on the unmute button.
Sorry.
Um, I want to respond mainly so I can say that, you know, we are listening, we do hear you. I don't want you to walk away feeling like you haven't been heard. I know that that's um been a concern. I'm not going to go into my personal feelings. Um, I've made it clear that, you know, I don't necessarily agree with all the decisions that have been made from August on, but I am part of this board and I do believe that we are looking at all of the information and the people that are making the decisions are absolutely looking at the safety of the kids. So I thank you for speaking up.
Anyone else? For public comment or communication?
I do not see any other hands up or anything else in the chat.
Do you see Will?
I do not see Will.
Okay, then we'll be moving on if anyone has any old business. Anyone has any new business? Moving on to the superintendent's report and handed over to Dr. Viera.
I thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, just quickly on the COVID nineteen update. As Mr. Wagenheim said, our return to school is on three twenty-two for K Keta five and on April fifth for grades six through twelve. Uh, principals have been hosting forums over the past week. Um, there's a couple more tomorrow. We're going to do forums before the return to school day just to get some information out to parents. And then we're going to do a forum after we return to school just to um get updates for how it's going, get some information out to families just to be able to make sure that we have everything covered. So we're going to do one before we go back and one after we go back. So please be on the lookout for that. Um, the buildings are ready. I went to the primary and the elementary today. I'll go there again tomorrow. So I've been able to check on the buildings to see how things are and things are looking great. Thank you to the custodial department and staff for that. I've had a conversation with um the police chief and with our school resource officer about traffic flow, so they're going to be out there the first couple of days of school just to um check things out. Um, I know when I talked to Brett today, he said after we changed the traffic flow to make that one way, it definitely made things a little bit quicker on the um middle school, primary school and elementary school campus. Um, one of the other conversations we had, and this is to Mr. Wagenheim's point, it was part of my report, so uh I'll just, I just included it all here, is we've also had that conversation with um building principals about students with anxiety and students who are anxious to come back. I know when I met with Mr. Romano, I believe it was um third, either Friday or Monday of this week, they have, he has a list of um, I don't want to give the number, but he has a list of kids who are anxious to come back to school. I know that he's been working with guidance and the counseling department to work and address the needs of those students. Um, Mr. Wagenheim, if that number is as high as you say it is, what I'll do is I'm going to talk to Mr. Romano tomorrow to reach out to staff and students and do something with the student body. So I'll have Mr. Uh, Romano handle that situation at the high school. I thank you for bringing it to our attention. I hope you brought it to his too, so he's aware of the number of students and the kids and the classes and what their concerns are. So I'll have Mr. Romano address that. I'm glad you already brought it to his attention, so he's on it. I'll follow up with him tomorrow as well. Uh, also a huge thank you to our local Board of Health. Um, they've worked collaboratively with a bunch of other towns to put together a vaccination um clinic for teachers. Uh, I received an email, I believe it was yesterday at like one fifteen, that said at two o'clock, a link was going out to um a staff-only vaccination um day. Uh, one is, I think, I believe Thursday, the twenty-fifth, and the other one is Saturday, the twenty-seventh. And then another link came out, so one link came out right at two o'clock, a follow-up link came out at um about two-ten for the second site. So we were able to push that out. I know a lot of staff, um, a lot of staff were able to take advantage of it. When I left work yesterday at about five, there were still about seventy-five to a hundred slots available. Um, when I logged on yesterday at seven o'clock at night for the Board of Health meeting, um, there were, all the slots were taken up. So looks like staff was able to take advantage of that. Um, Board of Health asked me to reach out to staff for additional um to see who else wanted to take advantage of it because they're looking to do a third um educator-only day. And um I sent that number out to the um local Board of Health. Uh, so I just, a huge thank you to them. That's a huge undertaking and a great opportunity um in both Oxbridge and Upton for our staff to have educators-only days to be able to go and get vaccinated. So thank you to them for their help. Um, that's all I have for my COVID nineteen update. I don't know if the committee has any questions that they'd like to ask.
I do.
Hi, Mrs. Grady.
Oh, was Julie saying something?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, just in the, in the vein of our return to school and with COVID, do we have guidelines in place for what would constitute needing to change the direction we're going in? I know at the beginning of the year, we had numbers that we said if we went over those numbers, we would shut down. Um, those numbers changed as we moved along. I just didn't know if there was anything similar for this.
No, we haven't, I haven't put together any metrics for specific numbers to come back. Um, what we do is, you know, the nurses every day send me out, send a list out of um kids who are symptomatic, so I, I look at that list on a daily basis and then we just track the numbers to see what, what's going on. Uh, you know, for instance, the principals, whenever someone tests positive, I get a text, an email or a phone call with information about what happened. I sent a letter out. Um, today for the primary school, the individual has been out, I believe, for almost fifteen days. So we had no close contacts to identify. When we find out that individuals test positive, we sit down, um, sometimes with the principals, a lot of times with the nurses, and have the discussion as to what the impact is on, on the school. So just like we've done throughout the year with each of the cases and the number of cases coming in. And we obviously, if it's going to impact staff, we might have to close down. We've had to do that on a couple of different occasions. So we'll continue to monitor it on a daily basis, um, as we've done since September.
Thanks. I just think it's good for the community to hear that there is a plan in place and, and you are monitoring it and, and that
Correct.
all the information is flowing through because that's how we can keep on top of it.
Correct.
Not what it's been working so far.
Thank you. And, and I said that it, when I, when I presented, I believe, two weeks ago, that we're going to continue with our abundance of caution approach, that just because we're back doesn't mean we're going to abandon all the safety protocols and, and all the safety measures we've put in place. We start up pool testing next week at the um, at the high school, we're going to do the high school, then add a school a week. I don't know what's going to happen beyond the eighteenth, once the free pool testing is up. Um, right now, we only have about forty students in each building participating in, in the pool testing. So we're slightly under um suddenly over ten percent of, of the population. So I don't know, I'm, hopefully I know a stats person at the high school who can help me with statistic validity with a sample pool of only ten percent or fifteen percent as to what the reliability of it is, but uh I don't know um what the statistic reliability of doing the pool testing, especially at the cost of, with, with that pool sample size of ten thousand dollars to only be um sampling ten to fifteen percent of the student body.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Sorry. Um, what's the staff response to pool testing? Or is the staff interested in being part of it?
The staff response was, we had seventy-one staff members across the district, um, say they would um agree to the pool testing. We roughly have Mrs. Keegan about two hundred and twenty faculty members, staff members in the district. That includes cafeteria workers, custodians, support staff, paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, um, teachers. So we're about two hundred and twenty staff members, so we're roughly about um roughly about thirty percent of the staff, seventy volunteered to be a part of it.
Okay, that's lower than I would have expected. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Mulder, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, I, Kelly just kind of asked the question that I wanted to follow up on, um, which was, you know, the pool test, and I'm kind of shocked that more people don't want to participate in that, but whatever. Um, could you just repeat again? You had mentioned, um, somebody had asked last week about the transmission in schools. Um, I'm very shocked to hear that kids don't want to go back because I'm around high school kids all the time and that's actually, I've heard quite opposite from many kids, but I get it. Um, perhaps I'm not talking to those kids. Um, so I think a lot of kids don't want to go back because like it's the end of the school year, so they're thinking summertime. Um, but as far as helping with this anxiety, what is the transmission or is there any evidence at this point of transmission in schools?
So let, let me, I'll, I'll answer both questions. So the first is, we have not seen any evidence of transmission within the Douglas Public Schools and in talking, attending meetings with other colleagues and superintendents, there's been little to no transmission um in schools throughout thi- this pandemic. Doesn't mean it, it may not happen, but that's what we've seen so far. In terms of the social emotional piece, and, and I'll focus in on the high school because that's where the conversation came. I met with Mr. Romano probably about a week and a half ago, and, and he did express that there is a population of student who's anxious to come back. And um we brainstormed some, some different scenarios as to what we can do for tho- for those kiddos. Um, you know, some of it went to, you know, do we have, the, the kids have already been in school two days a week. Do we slowly transition some of the, our anxious kids, starting two days a week, then the next week going to three days, then the next week going to four days and building from two to, two to five. Um, we've talked about having kids transition back, um, having kids transition back um half-days throughout, so at least they're in school for half the day. We talked about kids trend, you know, coming in on their, you know, Monday, Tuesday, regular day, and then doing half-day for a week and then slowly adding additional days. So we've looked at a variety of different structures for it. Um, some of the kids, it's just the changing routine and the change of the norms, so that's more of a dialogue and a conversation with the um with, with their counselors. So Mr. Romano has a handle on it. If the number's higher than, than what he has, um, you know, he'll work with guidance and with um kids on that. We have from now until the fifth to do it, but he has, he has a bunch of ideas of how to work with some of our anxious kids to come back. And if we need to do more, we will do more.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
I hope it's quick. Um, could you elaborate one more time on Desi's stance on hybrid learning at this point in the school year?
Yeah, so, so Desi's stance on hybrid learning is that hybrid learning does not count towards time on learning. So we can't have a hybrid, we can't have a hybrid model beyond the date that Desi has stated. So it's the fifth for Keta six, the um twenty-eighth, I believe, for middle school and then still setting the date for high school. So what they're talking about doing is for schools, you can apply for a waiver if you need a waiver, and the people who I've seen who are applying for waivers are school districts who physically can't be ready in the one month to um get there, whether it's because they don't have enough furniture, they can't figure out transportation, their schedule's a mess. That's what I've seen a, a lot. There could be other reasons, but those are the big reasons I've seen. Um, and what they're stating is that for every day you're, you miss time on learning, you have to make, make it up either on weekends, over vacation, you have to extend the school year, or you run the risk of losing one one-hundred-eightieth of your state funding for your FY twenty-two budget. So hybrid is not an option going forward.
Okay, and even past those dates, if we are necessitating to close down because of an outbreak, we would have to go immediately into remote. And then is hybrid not an option for tearing back up, or it is?
So, yep, so what, well, the guides we've received from Desi is that if we have to shut down, we need to communicate with them the reasons for shutting down to get their approval. Um, and then they will make the determine, again, I, I don't see them turning anyone down for an abundance of caution, but you need to run it by them to say, you know, we have, you know, we have thirty teachers at a high school, fifty are in quarantine, I just can't run, I need to shut down and go remote for um for ten days. So you have to run it by them to, to do that.
Okay, and last question. Are we aware of any districts that are opting to go or stay full remote for the remainder of the year? Is that an option?
I don't think that's an option.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Um, next part of the report is just a budget update from last week. And um I know last week I presented in the first few slides are, are the same. Um, principals had the difficult conversations with, with staff on, on Friday, and I know when I presented on Wednesday, I was vague to a lot of where the cuts were. I just wanted to have this opportunity now, now that we've had the conversation with, with people to be able to present to the committee and to the community where these um reductions are coming from and the impact they're going to, going to have. Um, just as a quick review, and I know I had this up here, the next three slides we've had up here um last week, but just for review, for those of you who weren't here or may have forgotten, just to go through our budget process. Um, our FY twenty-one budget appropriation from last year, that's what the town appropriated to the schools is thirteen million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, eight, in eight hundred twenty dollars. So that's our FY twenty-one appropriation. The town administrator has stated that we can add one-point-five percent to our FY twenty-one appropriation. So that's just north here, just shy of two hundred and seven thousand dollars, which brings our FY twenty-one-two appropriation to just over fourteen million dollars. Now, the FY twenty-two preliminary proposed budget um comes in at, as you see, seventeen and a half million dollars. That's the cost to run the Douglas Public Schools for, for next year. Um, we took use of grants and revolving funds to offset this um to the amount of two-point-seven million dollars, which brings our preliminary budget now down to fourteen-point-eight million dollars. A delta of eight hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, last week, we talked about net additions and reductions in staff to the amount of three hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. We're going to use additional reductions in the budget um of forty-three thousand dollars. That's the addition of use of grants. So our new preliminary budget is fourteen-point-four million dollars or an increase of four-point-seven-seven percent increase over FY twenty-two, which leaves us an updated delta of four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Um, now, as I said last week, and I want to reiterate again, and just information changes daily. We're cautiously optimistic that we can close this budget gap with a combination of the following. Um, reductions through line item analysis. We're going to continue to look at our line items and see where we can potentially make reductions. Possible additional use of revolving funds. So how can we use our revolving funds to offset the FY twenty-two budget? Possible increase in the town's allocation beyond the one-point-five percent. Um, I'm working with Mrs. Keegan and Mrs. Lovett and Mr. Wojcik. We have a meeting scheduled for Monday or Tuesday of next week. We're going back and forth on dates to have the conversation. And then potential increases in grant funding. Um, today I received an email that we received rural aid. That rural aid is for thirty-six thousand dollars. That money needs to be used out of FY twenty-one. We have to use it by the end of the year. I don't know if it's going to have the full thirty-six thousand dollar impact on FY twenty-two, but that's one of the things Mrs. Keegan and I will look at. Um, as I said, we don't anticipate any further reductions to staff um to close the remaining gap. Again, why do we make the decision to look at the decrease, um, to look at a reduction in staff? It comes from this slide. Over the past ten years, we've seen a thirty-three-point-seven percent decrease in student enrollment over a ten-year period. Um, our teachers and our special education, regular education teachers, we've seen a thirteen percent decrease in the same um ten-year period. And as I stated last week, we've added staff, we've added special education programs, we've also been able to reduce class size as a result of this. Um, we've seen paraprofessionals, an increase in paraprofessionals of nine percent and a total increased percentage change in staff um over ten years of two-point-four percent. So a lot of the decisions was based off of this data. So what is the impact to the school district? All right, so we'll go through this school by school. At the Douglas Primary School, it's two-point-five preschool paraprofessionals. We're losing two-point-five preschool paraprofessionals. And we're going through these paraprofessionals, we have um a large, we have a portion of these pairs that are still called TBS, that they're unfilled positions. So it's not that we had to have the conversation with thirteen-point-five people because many of the positions that we're reducing are currently unfilled. So what's the impact? Currently in the preschool, we have a teacher, a paraprofessional and an ABA in each classroom. And we're making the shift to just a teacher and an ABA in each class. So every class will still have two adults, the teacher and an ABA. When I talked to Mrs. Soshia and asked for what's the largest class size you have, and she said, when you're looking at your full-day, five-day preschool, the maximum historical is between fifteen and eighteen students. It fluctuates from year to year, but the maximum we can have is eighteen students. So if you go with that max, you're going to have two adults for eighteen kids, which is consistent with what we have in kindergarten. Some of our kindergarten numbers are higher than eighteen. In order to make this model work, we are going to have to add a point-five ABA to make this work. At the elementary school, it's three paraprofessional positions that we're eliminating. The academic center paraprofessional, the floating inclusion paraprofessional, and the floating flex center paraprofessional. So when we looked at the academic center paraprofessional, we have fewer students coming from grade one to grade two than there are students going from grade five to grade six. So with the delta in students that we're losing versus what we're gaining, we can run that program with the staff we have. And then the floating inclusion paraprofessional and the floating flex center paraprofessional, after meeting with Mrs. Urquhart and again, she met with Miss Nusudi, Mr. Bell, and looked at scheduling and staffing and IEPs. If we schedule in group students in more inclusive fashion, we will continue to allow for compliance with all services. So we'll still be able to maintain compliance with our students and with our IEPs by scheduling and grouping students in a more inclusive fashion. In the middle school, we have three inclusion paraprofessionals for a reduction. That's one per grade level. So currently, the model is one teacher and two paraprofessionals per grade level. And we're going to go to one teacher and one paraprofessional per grade level. Um, a schedule change to one schedule will help facilitate this in grades six, seven and eight. And with one special education teacher now per grade level, the need to have two paraprofessionals is not necessary. This model exists in many grade levels throughout the district and is compliant. Next is the reduction of two flex center paraprofessionals. Currently, these two positions are vacant. And again, as I said in the previous slide, with a look at scheduling and grouping students in a more inclusive fashion, we will be able to stay in compliance with all services. And finally, at the high school, the high school is looking at a reduction of three inclusion paraprofessionals. And then what we're going to do is we're going to add one full-time special education teacher. This will allow to have a dedicated special education teacher per grade level, moving from three to four. So each grade level will have a dedicated special education teacher, and this will uh allow us the ability to expand our co-teaching model. Additionally, we're going to reduce one full-time FTE teacher in history. Um, the impact is that we're going to be able to consolidate, we're going to be able to consolidate sections. So in some classes, we'll go from having two sections of something to one, and in other areas, we'll go from three sections to two. The impact is the possible flexibility of scheduling. Um, kids right now have had the opportunity over several years, according to what Mr. Romano shared with me, that um kids usually get their first choice. So when they, when they're choosing electives, we usually have them write down their top three choices and they usually get their top three choices. Um, with this reduction, it could possibly impacted that students only get two of their top three choices and then they have to go to their second choice in, in, in an area in order to complete their schedule. And then in math, it's the same impact. It's consolidating sections from two sections to one, or in some scenarios from three sections to two. And it's the same impact, possible impact on flexibility of scheduling, where kids may not get their first choice. Um, their, their top three choices, they may have to go to their fourth and fifth choice in order to complete their schedule. And that's the end of the presentation. That's, and that, that's the impact. I know last week, you were, as I said, vague. Um, because we wanted to have the conversations with staff about where the reductions were coming from. And um we didn't want to identify people. I see now that you saw the presentation. If we had done this last week, people would have been easily identified, and we wanted to have that one-on-one conversation before we presented, um, before we present this, this publicly. Uh, we have our FinCon meeting on Tuesday with um the Finance Committee, which will be attending to give an update on, on, on the budget, and then we have our public hearing on the seventh. But I just wanted to have this opportunity to share. But I just wanted to have this opportunity to share with everyone what the impact of the cuts were and where they were coming from.
Quick question?
Yes, Mrs. Mulder.
Sorry, my Zoom keeps like switching screens here. When do we go over line by item, line by line on the budget?
When do we, Mrs. Keegan, is that done at the public hearing?
Yes, we will be going over that in the public hearing. I'll also be giving the PowerPoint on, you know, the use of revolving funds, you know, beginning balance and projections and all of that as well, like I typically do. You know, every year is different. We don't typically go, we haven't for several years gone line by line, but we'll be going through the budget. And typically, we do it by, you know, district-wide, primary, elementary, middle, and high school. And we go, we kind of go by the function codes and then ask if there's any questions, because it's pretty much remaining the same, you know, there's not really many changes. But we will highlight any, I do have also an additional sheet highlighting where some of the biggest changes are, you know, as far as the overall budget, because most of it's staffing, you know, most of the budget is staffing.
I was just thinking, like, we were talking about different schools that people might go to last week. And when do you get those, when do you get the information on how to actually, how does it impact our budget? Let's say if people are going, I always forget that one that's like far away from here, the
Norfolk Aggie?
Yeah. When do we find out? Because that can be substantially expensive. When do we get that information? How does that actually impact the budget?
How that works is, is, well, Jean and I work together, and I typically email their business manager. In fact, we just got that recently, and I forward that to the town. That does not, that is not a budgetary item in our general fund budget. You know, in other words, not part of our appropriation. But certainly, it has an impact on the town side, whether it be, you know, BBT, Norfolk Aggie, and a number of other things. So that's basically on the town side of the budget. And it is part of the overall discussion on the town side among a number of other things with regard to, you know, a number of large expenditures and the available revenues.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the committee? Ms. Brunt, I saw that Mr. Riden had his hand up.
Sorry, I'll leave on screen.
Sorry.
It's up to you if you'd like to field a question.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Riden.
Thank you. I just wanted to just ask the question. How can we consider cutting five sections of math from the high school when it's one of the biggest MCAS subjects that we have? We currently have one science teacher teaching a section of math. I'm currently teaching robotics, and I'm looking to expand that program. As a matter of fact, Mr. Romano has given me permission to run robotics two next year. So it would seem to me like we would be needing more help in the math department, not lose someone there. A lot of our students are struggling in math lately. The sections that we're offering are basically lower level. We don't have as many AP offerings and honors offerings as we've had in the past. And if we continue to make our lower class sizes large, because we're consolidating students and consolidating class sizes, I think we're really doing our students a disservice.
I'll just, I'm not going to engage in debate. I'll just go over class sizes with people for everyone to see. I looked at class sizes a couple of days ago, and I'll just give some examples of. I found six sections that we could consolidate based off of the FY, the twenty, 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 twenty-one school year. So there was five, six sections we could consolidate, and we only would need to consolidate five of them. So if you look at geometry, college prep, you would go from two sections to one section potentially, and that would be a class size of twenty-six. In algebra two, you would go from two sections to one section, and that would be a class size of twenty-two. In algebra two, Part A, you would go from three sections to two sections for an average class size of fourteen. In AP stats, you could go from two sections to one section of nineteen. In algebra two, Part B, you could go from two sections to one section of sixteen. And in honors precal, you could go from three sections to two sections and have an average class size of twenty-two. So you have six options there, and you would have to pick from five. That's based off of FY, that's based off of this school year. In addition, we have, Mr. Romano was looking at, looking at enrollment in one of the elective courses. I believe it's Math Apps, and that might be based off of interest, a section that he may decide not to run next year. So when he looked at it, and I looked at those numbers, you know, again, some of them are high. The Geometry College Prep twenty-six is getting up there and pushing. But in some of the other sections, class sizes are twenty-two, fourteen, nineteen, sixteen, and twenty-two. Still is an acceptable place to be. So that's one of the things we looked at.
Well, Paul, let me just respond, sorry. The reason that some of those class sizes are small is to give kids opportunities to take those classes. The reason I've had two sections of AP Statistics for so many years is because kids can't all fit it into their schedule at the same time. So it's not going to be nineteen students being able to find one period that works for all of them. There's only going to be ten of them that are going to be able to take AP Statistics, and the others are going to be shut out of it, and they're going to have to find another option. The other thing is math is a four-year requirement for all students. So if we remove Math Apps, which is a subject that I created at the high school for those students, those seniors who struggled in math and couldn't take a trig or a precalculus, it gave them the opportunity to still have four years of math.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. VR, just to follow up on what Mr. Riden's saying, kind of the reason for my original question was that we do have that competition with like the other high schools. So I'm just, I'm so hesitant to cut from the high school, especially something like what he just brought up, because that is a concern that I have too. So I don't know if that's something that we can look into a little bit more, because, you know, what happens if a kid can't get into a class because it's at a certain point? And I know you've looked at it, but I'm just wondering if it's something that we can
Sure, so when I met with Mr. Romano on this, and we started this discussion probably about two months ago, and he looked at his enrollment, and he looked at his enrollment and the sections that he offered. And I said, you know, if we had to make reductions at the high school, where are the two areas that you feel you could do it and still be able to make sure that kids have the opportunities they had? And the two positions that we mentioned today and mentioned last week are the places where he felt he could make, he can make the reductions. He says to me, he's done the analysis, he's done the, he's been able to look at it, and that's where he feels comfortable making the reductions. In terms of opportunities, you're right, Mr. Riden, that when you take, and again, I just went from a pure numbers standpoint for people to see where some of the reductions come in. It may not be AP stats as an example, but I just wanted people to see class sizes of what they would look at. And I think I presented seven different options here. And when you eliminate or reduce a position, you're looking at five sections. So that would be, you know, based off of this year's numbers, you would have to pick five of those seven options. So Josh is confident that kids still need to take their math classes. So if they're not, if they're not, we need to schedule them in for four years of math. So it's not that they're not going to get math. They may have to choose between criminal law and psychology and not get both of them. That might be where the decision comes in. Or it might be between an elective in art and either taking two art electives, or one art elective, and a social studies elective. But the kids still need to get their core in ELA, math, science, and social studies. Not only is it a local graduation requirement, but it's a state graduation requirement. So the kids are going to get their four years of math.
Can I ask a question? Seems to be a lot of that tonight, sorry. I do have a concern, I understand what you're saying, you gave a bunch of examples, and not all of them would have to be cut. I'm following up on Mr. Riden's comment on Math Apps. I would ask that that be looked at very seriously, because I do know that there's a lot of kids who that is what they take, because they're not taking those higher-level math courses. And if that's not available, there's not a math that they can take for that fourth year.
Correct.
So I would be very hesitant to see that go by the wayside. Full disclosure, I have a kid who has signed up for it next year. And if you tell me it's gone, I honestly have no idea what math this kid's going to take. So I think when it comes to looking at which sections to reduce, if you have something that you can reduce from three to two, that would be preferable over something that you take away entirely.
Correct.
So I would just ask that that be a consideration. If we're looking at losing a teacher, my understanding was we were looking at consolidating sections more so than having classes go away entirely.
And again, that was just a quick conversation that I had with Mr. Romano. I know he says that every year, he, Mr. Riden, correct me if I'm wrong, there's the Math Apps trig, which one do we run, which, where's the bigger? Where are we getting more kids in? So he said sometimes he has to make that decision as to, I know trig didn't run this year, correct?
No, that's incorrect, sorry. Both of those classes are very, very popular.
Okay.
Our seniors, God bless them, they're not all the best mathematicians. We try to give them opportunities.
Okay, all right. So again, it's a conversation to have, that we could have with Mr. Romano.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're offering all the classes that we need, so the kids get, you know, their four years of math.
Yep, I mean, to make a note of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll just echo the sentence that Kelly, you know, it's more as we hear about this, we don't want to curtail, especially in math, the way they need it for four years. We are losing kids to the other organization, BBT, and they have all these programs. So we want to make sure we give every kid, buddy, the opportunities. If we're consolidating, that's one thing, but to take away a program completely, if we could look into that, I'd greatly appreciate that.
I'll find that with Mr. Romano.
All right, you have one for me, too. I'm going to switch gears for a second, though. With regards, and maybe Neely, you can chime in on this too. With regards to special ed, it seems like the paracuts are pretty, like evenly distributed, I'll say, between the schools.
That one more time, you just
So I didn't get to the question part yet. It seems like the cuts that we've had with the paras are fairly evenly distributed amongst the schools. So I'm wondering if, and I understand that services are still able to happen with this projected situation. Are students on IEPs also evenly distributed? And could you speak to these shifts? Like, are we expecting to see paras move around? And because we're looking at the co-teaching model, like, let's say you have a large influx of students who need to be on IEPs in the primary school, for example. Are we expecting to see a lot of movement? So can you just speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so, you know, within a school year, you know, the amount of kids on IEP at each grade level stays the same for the most part. Things that change that can be things like move-ins and like that. But again, for the most part, we can project, this is how many kids will be going from third to fourth. This is how many kids will be going from eighth to ninth and like that. So what we do is we speak to the special education liaisons, and we prepare for how we're going to service the kids. What this allows for is it allows, when Laura and I do the staffing for the next year, it allows us to move people if necessary. So in example, you know, let's say we have a program that in fifth grade currently is extremely heavy for a particular reason. Okay, and we know that those kiddos are moving up to sixth grade, we would shift. And the way that's done is through, you know, transfers. You know, again, people are still guaranteed their position, you know, as a paraprofessional or an ABA. But their assignment may change. And what we do is we make sure that we get to people before the end of the school year to let them know about that change. We let people know their assignment. And if somebody is transferred from one school to another, being a paraprofessional or ABA, we send a transfer letter to Mrs. Keegan and to Central Office to make sure that everything's copacetic as far as paperwork. Does that make sense?
It does. I think I'm just wondering, for example, if there was a particular grade that needed two paras to be able to have inclusion classrooms at the correct ratios of regular ed and special ed? And we're down to one para per grade, essentially, it seems like across a lot of the boards here. If we would end up needing to leave an entire grade without a para? I assume, I guess we're going to be crossing that bridge when we're getting to it, or?
So anytime you make decisions like this, you have to be sure about them. We definitely, you know, Paul and I just had a conversation the other day about, you know, making sure we could sleep at night, you know. And I was talking about different things and met with different administrators to make sure that everything was in a row and in line in order to make sure that we could create the inclusion classrooms that we wanted to create, but at the same time, make sure that the kids could get the services that they should be having through their IEP. So again, you know, Laura and I have gone through every single IEP. We've been working with the principals now for a couple of months on what the schedules will look like. Again, the elementary school, much of this model, we implemented about three years ago. The high school, we started implementation three years ago, and now we're just adding to it. And, you know, in speaking with the teachers at those schools who are doing the co-teaching model, they are seeing it is easier to service the special education students. So like anything, Becky, you know, you know, every August, there are kids that move in. You know, there are kids who, you know, may be coming from another state and having out-of-district placements. The placement, there's all sorts of things that can happen that we cannot anticipate. And at that time, let's say, you know, let's say, seven kids on IEP moved in, and they were all fourth graders. We may have to make an adjustment. And that's when I would go forward to Paul and say, okay, we have seven kids in fourth grade that moved in. We need assistance, and that's when we come to you and So this isn't a situation where we would stop that culture of making sure that kids are getting what they need and coming to the school committee and having that forthright approach of this is need to service kids.
Okay, all right. But we have reasonable expectations that there is a decent amount of stability.
At this time, with the students currently, we can give Again, I cannot speak to students moving into the district.
You don't have a crystal ball there, Neely?
I don't, but I wish I did.
I'm channeling my inner Mrs. Keegan, who just got kicked out. It is texting me to try to get back in, as Neely said, based on what we know right now and the information we have here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next on the agenda, we have Mrs. Urquhart here to talk about the first reading of the homelessness and foster care policies, JFABD and JFABF.
So I know that the school committee members all received a copy of the policies. What I've done, so I don't have to, not that I'm not happy to read the entire thing, but I don't think you want me to. I highlighted the main areas for you. If you have any questions about that, you know, I'll do the homelessness policy first, see if you guys have questions, and then we'll move to foster care. So what we want to do with all of our policies, obviously, is continually make sure that they're updated. We had an audit called the Educational Stability Act that I've been working on with the assistance of Lauren Nusudi and Sky Bamba over the last few months. It does go hand in hand with the tier focus monitoring review that we've been doing for special education, in special education and civil rights. But the Educational Stability Act speaks very specifically to McKinney-Vento, which is homelessness and foster care. So through that, you know, I worked with the attorney, made sure that we had updated policies. And now I'm going to go over some of the highlights of that. So the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Act defines homeless children or youth as individuals who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. So sometimes the way we like to say it is they don't have a place to lie their head at night, okay? When a district is made aware that a student is homeless, they are required to immediately enroll the student regardless of adequate documentation. So what that means is if a student comes in and they don't have access for some reason to vaccinations and things like that, we still are obligated to enroll them immediately. The district does work with homeless students and their families. The district does work with homeless students and their families to provide stability for in-school services. Homeless students are provided with district services that any other student would have. So we really, we, we take into consideration those protective classes. We consider 504, title one, L, special education, all of it. And make sure that, that students who are, are categorized as homeless. Do have the opportunity to receive equal services. And then the last part is, is that the district designates one member to service the, as the children and youth in transition liaison. And that happens to be me. So, so that's the overview of the homeless policy. Do you have any questions?
Do not.
All right, then I will move to.
Thank you, guys.
Did we lose Julie?
Did we lose?
She's still there, her screen's there.
Just has her flowers up. All right, so I'm going to move to foster care. So the district will ensure that educational stability. And again, it goes back to the Educational Stability Act I was talking about. For any student in foster care, will receive a free and, and appropriate public education. So I know you guys have heard we talk about that with special education. Same concept for kids that, that are involved with foster care. The Every Student Succeeds Act requires foster care students continue to attend their school of origin, meaning us, if the student is with us. Unless after a collaboration, collaborative decision-making process determines that a student. Shall attend the district in which the foster care provider lives. So in other words, if we have a kiddo that was a Douglas resident. Gets involved with DCF, is with a foster parent in Lemonster. There may be something called a best interest determination meeting to determine what is best for the student. We've held some of these and it's sort of been split down the middle. Where sometimes it's in the best interest of the, of the student to stay in Douglas with us. And sometimes it's in the best interest of the student to go to, to the local district. If, if it is determined that a student in foster care shall leave the district of origin being Douglas. The local district must enroll the student immediately. And in consideration of transportation for this, the district of origin will collaborate with DCF and make arrangements. And is responsible to transport the student. So let's get back to that example of Lemonster. If the, if the best, if the best interest determination says that the student should remain in, in Douglas. For the students living in Lemonster, we do provide transportation to make sure that the student can come to school in Douglas. So that is that. Any questions on that?
So thank you.
Complete.
An excellent first reading. All right, so next, I just want to have a conversation about negotiations. We're getting ready to enter into negotiations to discuss a successor contract with the DTA. We did a, the contract was up last year, there was a freeze for this year. So we need to sit down with, with, with them for this discussion. We have two dates set up already. One is April 7th and the other one is April 28th. Currently, Mrs. Grady and Mrs. Mooren serve on the negotiations committee. But Mrs. Grady is ending the end of her term. And as much as I would love to hope, Mr. Wagenheim, that we could do negotiations in two meetings. It may not happen. So I know that Ms. Brown is the alternate for it. So just as we prepare for negotiations with the 7th and the 28th, I want to make sure that we have enough time for the school committee. To have a plan in place for when Mrs. Grady's term ends. That we have someone who can slide into her position and also have an al- an alternate as well.
That will be me.
Okay.
No complaint from Becky? And Heather, you'll be staying on negotiations?
Yes, I'll be on negotiations.
There'll be some continuity.
So I can be an alternate.
Perfect. All right, thank you. So Mr. Riden, Mr. Wagenheim, you heard it here first. Who's going to be on the team going forward? Thank you for that. And then finally, at our meeting last week, when we were looking at the calendar, Ms. Mulder asked us to do a survey for February vacation. I sent something out to the community, had 104 people respond. Again, a relatively small sample size, the question was posed. Would, would people be willing to or open to the conversation of eliminating February vacation? In order to get out of school a week earlier? Seventy-one people or 68% of the people who answered the survey said, no, they would not. Thirty-three people or 32% of the people who responded to the survey said, yes, they would be in favor of it. So out of the 100 people who responded, who again, very small sample size of our 1,200 families. 68% said, no, they would not be in favor of eliminating February vacation to end school a, a week earlier in June.
So the calendar is all set then because we voted on it last week?
Correct. And then the last thing which I, I mentioned was today I got the email about rural aid. We received $36,000 for rural aid. Just got the email today, had a 30-second conversation with Ms. Keegan. That money needs to be spent by the end of this year, correct? By June 30th, 2011? So we're going to go look at how we can best utilize those funds for, for our students and for the district. So happy to get that money and we'll keep you posted as to how we best utilize it. That's it for my report for tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to the school committee and subcommittee report, accounts payable.
Didn't receive anything. So nothing tonight?
Moving on to the consent agenda, the March 3rd, 2021 meeting minutes. Nobody saw any issues. I'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes, school committee, March 3rd, 2021.
Motion made by Kelly. Second by Becky, roll call vote.
Becky Trania, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Morn, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you. And moving on to the school business and operations managers' report for transfers and reclassifications.
Um, I do apologize, it was a little late that I sent to you FY 2021, reclassification's number nine. And I wanted to first see, did you all receive it? Did you have an opportunity to look at it?
I did.
Okay, great, great. So what that's from is, and it's funny, it's, last year seems like three years, but um. So I did forget that back in the very beginning, remember, we didn't have a budget. Because a town meeting didn't happen until far after. So we had that one 12th budget going on and it's kind of a long story, but long story not short. There was first, there were some payroll items that we had to put in school choice and then now we have to reclass back to the general fund. Yep, one of those other items that, that was so, was so early on, I, it just, and I was actually reviewing everything for, looking at FY 21. Projections for looking at the FY 22 to see just maybe, you know, if we can do some more mitigation too. With regard to school choice, you know, some additional funding as we, as Dr. Vera alluded to earlier. So does anyone have any questions on the reclassification?
Be looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the FY 21 reclassification number nine dated March 17th, 2021. In the amount of $33,810.97.
Motion made by Heather.
Second.
Second by Kelly, roll call vote.
Becky Trania, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Morn, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
And the only other thing that I do have that I, I want to talk a little bit about this evening is. With regard to the reopening, I do want to, and I know Dr. Vera had mentioned it earlier. The custodians and, and you know, Jeff have been working very, very hard all year. And I do want to kind of give a shout out to the custodians that have been working on Saturdays. From six until 10, pretty much every single Saturday, not all of them, but a good, a good number of them. And, and you know, keeping up with all the cleaning, sanitizing and, and you know, setting up classrooms and all of that. Bussing went very well, you know, I sent out the survey, we have all of that set to go. That went very, very well, pretty seamlessly. You know, we do have to see how things go because it is still a COVID year, a little bit different. So we'll see how things go as far as spacing and, and things like that. And school lunch, all set to go. So I mean, everybody really jumped right on board and I want to say a great thank you to everyone involved in, in getting things set up and ready to go. And it went very well and pretty seamlessly. And I'm not saying it wasn't, it wasn't a lot of hard work, but people just jumped right into it. And you know, I think we were very pleased and, and very happy that things are, are moving right along.
Yeah. Does anybody have any topics not anticipated? None, we have no need for executive session.
Correct.
And we will be having our public hearing on April 7th, which is our next meeting. And I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Just to clarify, Lisa, that will be on Zoom, the public hearing will be a Zoom meeting as well?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:01 PM.
By Kelly.
Second.
Second by Heather, roll call vote.
Becky Trania, aye.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Julie Mulder, aye.
Heather Morn, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Happy St. Patrick's Day.